In compliance with Chapter 231 of the Public Law in 1975 entitled the Opupuck Meeting Act, after notice of this meeting has been provided as specified in the act. Proper notice of this public meeting was provided in the notice of May 9th, 2011. Said notice was posted at the entrance of the Board of Education offices, mail to the Nutley Sun, The Star-Ledger, and North Jersey Herald-Looms, and the Nutley Journal. Mailed to the Nutley Township Clerk, advertised in the Nutley Sun on May 19th, 2011. Posted on the district website. This is an official meeting. Please stand for over the side and the flag. Pledge allegiance to the Constitution of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, united, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Mrs. Kukusen, call the board please.
Mrs. Dancheck-Gordon.
Here.
Mrs. Blin.
Here.
Mrs. Zinsby.
Here.
Dr. Reed.
Here.
Mr. Rogers.
Here.
Mrs. Russo.
Here.
Mrs. Spillar.
Here.
Mrs. Spazada.
Here.
Mr. Cook.
Here.
Superintendent's Report.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you, Mr. Cook. I believe we are going to start with awards for our students for our gifted and talented program. And we have two presenters, Mrs. Clarico and Mrs. DiPolitano. If they could begin the program, please.
Good evening, Mrs. Allen, Mr. Cook, and the board of education members. Thank you for inviting us here this evening in honor of our gifted and talented students for forensics and lawfare. They did an outstanding job. I'm so proud of all of them. But I would like to take a moment now to thank Mrs. DiPolitano for an outstanding job. As you know, she was shared among five schools. She maintained our gifted and talented program, maintained it with integrity, kept us competitive among the other school districts in Essex County. And I can't say enough to call upon her that she did. So I would like to mail, yes, Mrs. DiPolitano, to come up.
With your permission, I think I would rather just talk loud instead of using a microphone. As Mrs. Clarico said, this year Nutley gifted and talented students competed in a variety of county, regional, and state academic events. The first one was on January 7th. Five Nutley students represented our district in the Essex County Forensics Tournament in interpretive reading. Eleven districts from all over Essex County participated. Students at the tournament were required to select a piece of literature, interpret and practice it, and present it orally at the tournament. Judges evaluated the readers based on enunciation, vocabulary, and character development. Now, there are two ways to win an official forensics tournament, as individuals and as a team. I am delighted to tell you that the Nutley students on this team did both. When all the district scores from the eleven districts had been totaled, the district with the highest score was Nutley. They brought this team trophy back to the district. It is with great pleasure that I introduce to you the Essex County Forensics Champions. Victoria Daley. Zoe. Zoe Steck. Kayla Skelly. Gabrielle Salzrula. And Gabriella Giordano. Now, I did mention that you also could win individually, and it just so happened that at the same tournament, we had a fourth-place individual winner, Gabby Giordano. We had a third-place winner, Victoria. And the first-place individual Essex County champion, Gabby Salzrula. So we figured with that success, we would try it again. On March 11th, we took two teams to compete in the New Jersey Consortium for Gifted Education's Double Forensics Tournament. This was a regional tournament with a variety of Essex and Morris County districts competing. Amazingly enough, when all the district scores were tabulated, the Nutley interpretive reading team repeated the success of the Essex County team by winning the overall first-team trophy. Again, it is an honor for me to announce the students on this first-place team. Ellie McCreech. Marissa Daley. Sophia Pramagoulis. And Marie Weish. And Maggie Specter-Williams. I just mentioned that it was a double-category forensics tournament. The second category was oratorical declamation. In oratorical declamation, students must select a speech that has previously been delivered by a famous or a not-so-famous speaker. And they have to deliver that speech in the spirit of the original orator. This year, Nutley students in the category of oratorical declamation won two individual trophies. Winning fourth place for a speech originally delivered by Judith B. Human at the signing of the Individuals with Disabilities Education Act was fifth-year Jennifer Paulfelder. The first-place winner at this tournament in the category of oratorical declamation for her performance of "Ain't I a Woman" by Free and Slaves to Join Her Truth, Gabby Salzrula. And just one more, that in the individual standings of the interpretive reading, Sophia Pramagoulis won the first-place individual trophy. Okay, lawfare. Every year, the New Jersey State Bar Foundation offers New Jersey students the opportunity to write an original law case and submit it to the State Bar Foundation as part of their lawfare contest. A team of lawyers actually reads through all the cases and selects winners from each grade level. This year, there were over eighty cases submitted statewide. And also, this year, Nutley third-grade students made lawfare history by becoming the first district ever to win first, second, and third place. So now you know why we had to bring so many pieces of yours. Okay, please join me in congratulating the Lincoln School third graders for winning third place in the lawfare competition with their original case, It's the Leash You Can Do. Sophia Arujo. Damon Chen. Alexa Ditoma. Honor Fitzpatrick. Jacob Gonzalez. Nicole Kane. Nicole Mafucci. Joseph D'Sandria. Alexis Merritt. Michael Mills-Balas. Gabrielle Costronoff. Sofia Perez. Victoria Ventura. Ariana Gossack. And Isaiah Washington. Congratulations to the first-place winners. Please join me in congratulating the second-place state winners for writing a case, The Broken Branch Blunder. That's not the tongue of the broken man. The Broken Branch Blunder from Spring Garden School. They are... Sarah Demraskey-Healer. Nicholas Duka. Amy Hill-Pappofinger. Kate Harkins. Antonio Lampont. Clarine A. Ropado. Marissa Rieludo. And Davia Rotocco. Congratulations to the second-place winners. Now, we actually brought three of these home to Nutley, one for each winning school. But I happen to have this one from Yanasko School, which also happens to have been the first-place state winners, for writing the case of the Crooked Crocs. Pax Ardons. Kayla Duria. Krishna Desay. Albert Harris. Arnold Hunter. Lindsay Knowles. Gabrielle Mackelwitz. Mary Mankelwitz. Gregory Ravinsky. Philip Ruiz. And Cameron Schilt. And congratulations. On behalf of all these gifted and talented students, I would like to thank the board for giving us the opportunity to share with you our accomplishments. And I would also like to thank Mrs. Rosemary Clarico for her unqualified support and direction as supervisor of the program. It won't be the same without you. Thank you.
On behalf of the board, I'd like to congratulate you, Mrs. Clarico, and all the winners. It's a terrific program, and these are the fruits of the labor. Congratulations.
If you could just be patient for one whole... Our next program, and it certainly has direct linkage to the young people and the success that we both witnessed and shared, are teachers. And these teachers have been selected by their peers and their principals with the very prestigious Governor's Teacher Recognition Award. I will give these certificates to Mr. Cook, and I will read the principals with recipients' names. Officially, I'd like to acknowledge Mrs. DiPolitano for doing an outstanding job in bringing this program to the... She brings together the wealth of experience in the gifted and talented area. And I'd also like to acknowledge and thank Mrs. Clarico for her input and her supervisory skills in helping to keep this program the outstanding program that it is. And I'd also like to mention that Mrs. Clarico is in fact retired on June 30th, and we wish her the wealth. She had an outstanding career and leaves a legacy of outstanding educational promise. Our first recipient for the Governor's Teacher Recognition Award is Steve DeGugoria from Nutley High School. From our middle school, Pat Sloan. From Lincoln School, Kathy Carvani. From Radcliffe School, Carla Caleri. From Spring Garden School, Donna Hutchinson. From Washington School, Patty Barnes. And from New York School, Patty Keating. Congratulations.
We'll now take a ten-minute recess. Congratulate the winners, and tomorrow's the school day. We're supposed to stay, but the three told you.
Just an update to the board that the RFP for legal services and doctor services are due Wednesday of this week, June 15th. We've already received some responses regarding that RFP. And a bid for the final asbestos removal for the high school is being advertised this week. We are also beginning today undergoing an audit from the Bureau of Child Nutrition. Their representative was in the board office today reviewing all of our spring lunch applications. And then she did a site visit at the Antifa to observe the team service operation there. Tomorrow morning, she will be at the high school briefly, and then she will be going over to observe Washington School. And at the end of the day, I will be having an end to conference with her.
Thank you, Mrs. Anderson. Committee of reports?
Yes, Mr. President. I guess this is the time to give you my report on the athletic committee. As you know, and the other board members know, we've met and we've spent quite a bit of time talking over the moving forward with the pay-to-participate in the new school year. After meeting with certain parents, and then spending quite a bit of time with the athletic director, and then the committee of Fred Calera, myself, Steve Rogers, and Danny Russo, sat down and agonized over the pay-to-participate proposals coming forward tonight. As you know, when we sat down to draw up our budget, we allowed for a certain income based on our pay-to-participate. Based on the numbers that were presented to by the athletic director, and we went on the conservative side simply because we want to make sure we can meet our requirements as far as the budget is concerned. And we've come up with a figure that is $200 per student per year. In other words, if you have a son or daughter that wants to participate in football, baseball, basketball, girls' crew, girls' lacrosse, whatever it might be, it is going to cost you as a parent $200 to have them participate in as many sports as they would like to participate in in one year's time. That's per student for all the sports. We also agreed on a cost per family, knowing that it's even an additional burden on some parents that have two or three students in the programs, in the athletic programs throughout the system, and that family cost is $300 per family. This money is money that we have set aside as a school board to be part of our operating budget. And we knew ahead of time we were going to go to pay-to-participate. We didn't know what the actual cost was going to be, and so we've had to fill in the gaps and come up with this number that we did. I don't think any board member here is happy on what we're doing, and I can just speak for myself, being a third-generation Nutley. My father played sports here. I played sports. My children played sports, and my grandchildren would be playing sports here. So this is kind of new to Nutley. Certainly, it's not new to the state of New Jersey. There are many school districts throughout the state that have gone into some form of pay-to-participate. And again, I know as board members, we're not happy that we have to do this. It's based on monies that we've lost, help that we've lost from Trenton. We need to find ways to tighten our belt. This was a way that we thought would be fair and equitable to all the athletes. There was some discussion about charging particular sports more money because of the cost incurred for different requirements for that particular sport. The committee agreed to go with a flat across-the-board fee. The important part of this is that all the activities that we now have in the township of Nutley, and there's quite a few of them, I've... Just so there's no questions, I'll just briefly go through what we're talking cheerleading, bowling, crew, golf, track, cross-country, winter track, baseball. And I don't mean to do this to you, but I want to make sure that everybody gets a clear picture of what we're talking about. Basketball, football, boys' soccer, boys' tennis, wrestling, girls' basketball, girls' soccer, softball, girls' tennis, volleyball, lacrosse, ice hockey. I almost said more, ice hockey, and the marching band will all be a part of this incurred cost. We, as a board, have talked about this in general, but as a committee, we spent quite a bit of time agonizing over this. It's the way we're going to have to go. I hopefully... We expect some... I shouldn't say we expect. There's been talk about additional money coming in from Trenton. If that does happen, and if we find ourselves in a better situation next year, I would certainly go back to the board, my board members, and see if there's some way that we could either deflate this cost a little bit or do away with it. But right now, this is something that we're going to have to live with for this year. We are still in the process of putting together letter information to the parents. There are still some gray areas out there we're not sure of, conferring with council, conferring with other districts who have laid the groundwork for us already, such as participation in the sports, dropping out of the sport, moving out of the town, whatever it might be, are they entitled to a refund, when the refund is due? So that hasn't been set in concrete yet, but we are working on it. Along with that, there was some discussion by our committee to look at allowing the parents to use a credit card to pay for some of these fees. It's been something that's been talked about in the district to help pay for the food at the different schools, your meals at the different schools, and we're going to... Our PIA is researching along with council on the use of a credit card that it's still money and it's still the same amount, but it might help some parents negotiate through this situation this year. We are going to be going before all the booster clubs and giving a in-depth speech on their costs, what we're trying to do, why we're trying to do this. So we're willing to meet with any booster club group, parents, whatever they like to bring them up to speed on why we're doing this, and encourage the booster clubs to continue doing what they're doing because even though the school district funds certain sports and certain amount of equipment, and the parents now are going to be paying for that in addition, the booster clubs go above and beyond and buy jackets, shirts, awards, trophies, things that do not come out of our operating budget. So I would encourage the booster clubs, when we meet with them, to continue their participation. They do a great deal for us now, and I hope that they will continue to do that. I think that's it, board members. If there's any questions, we can take them later, I guess, whenever...
Or, you know, we'll stray a little bit again, and we'll take, you know, board members have questions, ask them.
Sure.
I have one.
Sure.
Is it safe to say that the level of the... It was set so that we did not have to cut?
Yes, I thought I made that clear. There is no cut in any activities different than what we had last year.
Which we were anticipating.
As a board, when we first started drawing up our budget, we were looking at making cuts in particular sports, eliminating some programs. This pay-to-participate clearly does not eliminate any activity that we had working for us last year.
I have a question you mentioned, Mrs. Zinski, about credit cards. Is there going to be a payment plan option available as well, possibly?
We just... We spent some time talking about it. I'm not sure that the Board of Education, how that's allowed to happen, but we're researching anything that'll make life easier for our parents. Obviously, they need to pay the money, but a payment plan or a PayPal or a credit card works. I would not be opposed to it, but Mr. Pomaco and Karen... I would not be opposed to it, but Mr. Palamoco and Karen will be looking into that.
And are we going to eventually have a final policy presented to the board that lays out the entire mechanics of it?
Definitely. We have quite a few letters that Karen Gaimins and the business administrator and the athletic director have compiled from other districts. We're going to feed off of them and certainly, we probably would even look for some expertise from some of our board members to put this together and make it as tight as we can, yes.
Thank you, Karen.
A servant.
We know the economy's pretty tough on a lot of people, so my question is, what about those who may not be able to afford pay to participate? Do we have a provision that will help these families?
I don't really think so unless, the only way to bypass this pay to participate would be if your children are involved in the free lunch program, I don't know what real word is referred to, but the free lunch program. They would be, we would have to pick up the cost for them. At the high school level, from what we've been able to find out, there's a minimal, minimal amount of children that participate in the free lunch.
Thank you. Any other questions? Thank you, Mr. President, it's a good report. Any other committee reports? Dr. Reed.
The procurement best practices committee met this past Thursday, June 2nd, and the charge of this committee is to modify existing board policies and/or propose new policies, implement best practice recommendations as proposed by the state of New Jersey's Office of State Comptroller. Now, this is a report that was introduced in March of 2010. It was a report that I actually brought to the board's attention last year regarding our initial RFP for board council. And our board members, trustee Scolera and Flynn, have agreed unanimously, including myself, to endorse this as our model, if you will. So the idea being we're going to develop a process that will apply to all professional services, that being board council, athletic and school physician, those RFPs, I think the deadline is June 15th, from which Ms. Gaimins mentioned earlier, board council, our auditor, insurance carrier, so everything's on the table. To give you a brief overview or some of the highlights in terms of what we're going to hopefully abide by in practice in terms of this best practice report, one of the first recommendations is that the pool of contractors solicited should be as expansive as possible. Again, there is the recommendation that these RFPs should be on our board website. That came from trustee Scolera, as well as other sources outside of the Health, I think that's what we used to rely on in the past, so the Star Ledger and so forth. The report is also seeking that we draft clear and unambiguous statements of work for our solicited contracts. We need to judge proposals on the basis of predetermined merit-based evaluative criteria made known to the vendors before proposals are submitted. And trustee Flynn will be discussing some of the protocols, or at least some of the evaluative criteria that we're going to identify for our board council. We also need the weighting of individual evaluative criteria to be included, the use of a scoring process, which will include understandable, which should be understandable to evaluators as well as vendors, and again, the need for an evaluation committee, which our president Kuchka put in place, in which the evaluators must be qualified to do the judging. And again, this is a process, I feel, that will hopefully avoid future conflicts of interest for the district. Ms. Flynn, do you want to talk about some of the evaluative criteria?
Oh, sure. I mean, speaking in general, eventually, you know, we're going to have the first run at this with the board council RFP. We're going to establish, and the State Comptroller's report talks about looking at the criteria required of the proposal, making sure that people who submit proposals are addressing the criteria and you give a score to that criteria. You look at the cost, you look at past experience performance, and you put it all together and you weigh them and you come to a score, and that's why the committee process is helpful in that. The only thing I'd like to add is that since the State Comptroller issued the report in March of last year, it's been very active in this area of professional service contracts, and it's something that we think we as a committee believe we need to be ahead of on this. We simply just need to adopt policies that demand transparency, competition, and then the published standards. So we've circulated amongst ourselves an evaluation criteria. We've submitted it to the board secretary for her consideration. And we hope, you know, for this, and we'll use it with this next proposal process, and we will continue to develop policies that are consistent with the State Comptroller report. That's about it.
Are we going, are we, as board members, wanting to see that question there again? Or see it from the beginning?
I think once --
The proposal that you're setting up the criteria.
Yeah, we have, we have sent it to Ms. Yen for her comments, and then we circulated. Our goal is to have that given to the people who submit proposals at the time they submit, so that they know what the rules of the games are, because that's basically what the comptroller's talking about.
Will that be part of our RFP package?
Yeah, it's not right now, but it will be once we get the proposals in, so they understand the process as to, it's just basically, you know, an evaluation of the material of the proposal. And then I think our intention as a committee is to look at the proposals with the board secretary, prepare a memorandum for the full board to understand that process and what we looked at, and then so that the board is, can come to a decision as to in those areas. We have three RFPs out there right now, we always have RFPs going forward, so this is a, you know, first good step in the direction of where I think the State Comptroller is going with these issues. And the only thing I want to add is that we also, I brought with us to our meeting, we looked at the RFPs that are used by the State Attorney General's Office as a guide to kind of give us that comfort level that we're going down the right path in this area. The State Attorney General's Office has seemed to already infuse these principles from the State Comptroller's office into its process. So I think we as a board, we're going to be leaders in doing it as a board of education.
Thank you. Any other questions?
I'd just like to make one statement from the committee. Also, we discussed also where it's on the informal bids. We're going to adopt a policy for informal bids also when we need three quotes when it's under the bid requirement. We still should have some sort of a standard, we talked about on the committee that they, for no matter what goes out, so that there's a standard, the way the three go out, they come in, and they're evaluated the same way, so that we, and I was very happy, I want to thank you as the president for appointing the committee, and it was great working on that.
One question. From this committee, does it go to policy then? To set policy?
Well, we'll have to modify, you know, once the committee makes their recommendation and we agree to this is what we want to do, then yes, policy committee would have to formalize it, so memorialize it in our support of a policy and along with policy and our regulations, so that the practices will be spelled out for everybody to see. Maybe else, something? Any other committee reports?
Real quickly, the academic committee did meet two weeks ago. We met with the administration, Principal Cashbone, Vice Principal Williams, and Jill Delia. Essentially, the meeting was basically for the academic committee to be apprised of some of the changing issues with what's happened in Essex County Vocational Technical Program, and also to get a better handle on what is also transpiring at the high school regarding our final exam schedule. And I was informed recently that Principal Cashbone is making attendance mandatory. I think that was a pre-existing policy that he is reinforcing. But I also want to bring the board to tension that, I want to say, in early July, we do have a retreat planned with our new superintendent, and I think it's imperative that we do establish these strategic initiatives or a plan, if you will, for each of our committees, which essentially will provide a roadmap. Instead of us walking aimlessly through the forest, we just need some type of guidance in this process. And I did ask for President Kuchka to bring the search for a draft back on board for Phase Two of that initiative to help facilitate that process, Mr. LeBraire and so forth. I think that's something to remind you, I don't know if there's a place to do that, but.
Support member. No, I think we can talk about that in closer. This contract, I think.
Well, that is the extent of our meeting, if any, our trustee Russo or Martin Le likely contributes. Is that about it?
Yep, that's what we went over. And I think even Mr. Cashbone did put out a memo and an email to all the parents stating that attendance has to be taken, and he did tell all the students he announced it within the high school, so.
Thank you.
That will be done.
Any other committee reports? We now come to the portion of our meeting where we allow members of the public to address the board. In this section, we allow questions or comments on only the resolutions addressed in tonight's agenda. Our board regulations allot 20 minutes for these communications. Each person shall be limited to three minutes, and we ask you to try to state within this requirement, speakers may speak more than once only after all is wishing to speak on a topic having heard. All statements will be directed to me as the chairperson, and no one may address board members in the meeting. Please be reminded that if a statement is too lengthy, personally directed, abusive, obscene, irrelevant, or redundant, your participation may be terminated. Please remember to always state your name and address each and every time you address the board. First-person person, please step forward.
Rob Delmaro.
There's a, to the microphone, please.
I live in Cary Court in New Jersey. My concern about the pay for participating is that --
This portion is only for resolution items. We do not have a resolution on that item. There will be another portion of the meeting where you can speak about anything.
Okay. All right, then I'll come back.
Just later on in the meeting. Okay.
If there's a --
No problem.
Anyone who's heard on resolution items? Seeing that, Mr. Spazada, will you move superintendent's resolutions 1 through 18?
President, I move superintendent's resolution 1 through 18 with the rewording on number nine for middle school guidance counselors. It says here, two days after school closing and two days, it should say prior to school closing. That's a little type of, to school, I'm sorry. That's the only correct one.
On page two of the board package. Our second motion. Any discussion? No discussion, roll please.
Mrs. Dancheck-Morton?
Yes.
Ms. Flynn?
Yes.
Ms. Kuzinski?
Yes.
Dr. Reed?
Yes.
Mr. Rogers?
Yes.
Mrs. Russo?
Yes.
Mr. Spazada?
Yes.
Ms. Kuzinski?
Yes.
Dr. Reed?
Yes.
Mr. Rogers?
Yes.
Mrs. Russo?
Yes.
On all, I need to abstain on number 23% to walk. Ms. Scolera?
Yes.
Ms. Kuzada?
Yes.
Ms. Kuzada?
Yes. Ms. Flynn, would you move board administrator, board secretary's resolutions 1 through 7, please?
Can I hereby move resolution, this is manager, your board secretary will move 1 through 7.
Do we have a second? Kuzinski, seconds. Any discussion?
Discussion.
Dr. Reed? Regarding, we're doing business administrator's, number four, approval of a little contract Computer Solutions, Inc. I'm just curious regarding perspective of our new superintendent, particularly with the student record-keeping component of that software, is this something that we feel surprised of in terms of us renewing this contract? That we want to move in that direction tonight?
Well, I think, Mr. --
I have not had any such discussions with Mr. Laszlo as of this date. We do need to continue to maintain the software that we have, and I believe his intention will probably be to evaluate the system that we have and perhaps look at something for the following year.
I think on an ongoing basis, we have to remove this software. So that means to stay in business while it's being evaluated, and then if we go in a different direction, we'd be doing that.
I agree.
But in the meantime, accounting systems have to run.
I'm sure the technology committee has been looking at that as well. Thank you.
Ms. Russo?
Yes, on number five, approval of food service. Did we put out an RFP for that and we didn't? Why did we not do that?
It's very admirable that you asked that question, not only because it's a resolution, but having the woman from the State Department of Child Nutrition here today, we also had a similar discussion. The initial contract that was done with Chartwell's was done with the option to renew for five years, and that is legally allowed with food service contracts. Chartwell's, when they came in with the initial proposal, had proposed putting an investment of $200,000 into the district, I'm sure you recall, Ms. Kuzinski said we were on the board at that time, to expand the operation in the high school and the main school, and allow additional and new equipment. Each year of the five years that is not renewed with Chartwell's, the district has to pay back one-fifth of that $200,000. But currently, we are allowed to renew their contract to extend for five years.
What year of their hired contract are we in now?
The proposal that we are approving, I think it was on my agenda for your approval, would be year three.
Mr. Scolera?
I suppose, while we're on that, you know, I assume that $200,000 was the renovation to the kitchens, correct?
More than just kitchen, I think the cafeteria, sorry. It changed the cafeteria. It was a major renovation in the high school.
Because it was just, did they pay gas and electric towards us also for these? Because I do understand now that they're the vendor supplying this several policy center, and we do cooking, the archive.
Ms. Flynn, would you move board administrator, board secretary's resolutions, one through seven, please?
May I hereby remove resolution, this is manager, your board secretary, will remove one through seven.
Do we have a second? Kuzinski, seconds. Any discussion?
Discussion.
Dr. Reed?
Regarding, doing business administrators, number four, approval of a little contract, Computer Solutions, Inc. I'm just curious regarding perspective of our new superintendent, particularly with the student record-keeping component of that software, is this something that he feels apprised of in terms of us renewing this contract? That we want to move in that direction tonight?
Well, I think, Mr. Kuzinski...
I have not had any such discussions with Mr. Lazinski as of this day. We do need to continue to maintain the software that we have, and I believe his intention will probably be to evaluate the system that we have and perhaps look at something for the following year.
I think on an ongoing basis, we have to remove this software. So that means to stay in business while it's being evaluated, and then if we go in a different direction, we'd be doing that.
I agree.
But in the meantime, accounting systems have to run.
I'm sure the technology committee has been looking at that as well. Thank you.
Mrs. Russo?
Yes, on number five, approval of food service. Did we put out an RFP for that, and we didn't? Why did we not do that?
It's very admirable that you asked that question, not only because it's a resolution, but having the woman from the State Department of Child Nutrition here today, we also had a similar discussion. The initial contract that was done with Chartwell's was done with the option to renew for five years, and that is legally allowed with food service contracts. Chartwell's, when they came in with their initial proposal, had proposed putting in investment of $200,000 into the district, I'm sure you recall, Mrs. Russo said maybe you were on the board at that time, to expand the operation from the high school to the main school, and allow additional and new equipment. Each year of the five years that is not renewed with Chartwell's, the district has to pay back one-fifth of that $200,000. But currently, we are allowed to renew their contract to extend for five years.
What year of the rising contract are we in now?
The proposal that we are approving, I think, on tonight's agenda for your approval would be year three.
Mr. Slara?
I suppose, while we're on that, you know, I assume that $200,000 was the renovation area to the kitchens, correct?
More than just kitchen, I think the cafeteria, sorry. It was a major renovation in the high school.
Because it was just, did they pay the gas and electric towards us also for these? Because I do understand now that they're the vendor supplying the several policy center, and we do cook in the archive school, and supply the several policy center in global. So that is the gas and electric they're using that's ours?
We charge, there are two entities that we provide food for, and we do charge them a price per meal, and it is a higher price than we are charging within our own district.
So we're getting money back for that?
And so they pay us that. That goes towards our profits.
Any other discussion?
One point of clarification on BA resolution number seven, the review of payments for those individuals off the county entrance coverage. Is that pursuant to our contract? Does that like, you know, pay up?
Yes.
Thank you.
Any other discussion? Hold the roll, please.
Mrs. Dancheck-Morton?
Yes.
Ms. Flynn?
Yes.
Mr. Kuzinski?
Yes.
Dr. Reed?
Yes.
Mr. Rogers?
Yes, on all but communication bills, and finally, I'm going to amplify a little bit on that, because I already filled out the issued communication bills. I'm hoping that as we move forward, that we will begin the process of a possible shared service with the township regarding our mobile phones, our internet service. I still find it incredible that, you know, when we look at these bills, we look at, we're paying Verizon, we're paying the often line AT&amp;T, I mean, there's got to be some package. There's got to be some way to pull this all together to reduce the cost to taxpayers. So I would ask that maybe it comes other technology, maybe the technology committee can put this on the front burner, because this is the way to save money. And I would believe that the township, our town commissioners, would probably welcome some sort of a shared service in this area. So I vote no based on the fact that we have an opportunity to save money, and I would like to see us move forward with this as soon as possible.
Thank you, Mr. Kuzinski.
Mrs. Russo?
Yes, on all but number seven, I abstain for seventy-four.
Mr. Slara?
Yes.
Mrs. Spazada?
Yes.
Mrs. Pocata?
Yes. In this section, we allow questions or comments on all school-related matters. Our regulations allot 30 minutes for these communications. Each portion shall be limited to three minutes, and we ask you to try to state within this requirement. As I stated earlier, all statements must be directed to me as the chairperson. Please be reminded that if your statement is too lengthy, personal, directed, abusive, obscene, irrelevant, or redundant, your participation may be terminated. Please always remember to state your name and address each and every time you address the board. For the first person wishing to speak, please step over.
My name is Rob Delmar. I live at 21 Cary Court in Nutley, and I wanted to speak about the pay for participation program that you are, if you do it or not. My concern is that, for most families in Nutley, that's probably going to be the $300 family fee, because most siblings, if their brother or sister plays sports, most likely their sibling will play as well. For others, $200 or $300, in these rough, epigenomic times right now with gas prices and food prices going up, and people in the private industry not getting raises or getting laid off or losing their jobs, it's a very critical time for these children and their parents might not willing to pay that extra $200. I think the other thing that you may or may have not taken into consideration is not only the $200 to pay for your child, but you also have to cover other expenses, whether it's a softball glove, or a baseball glove, or a football piece, whatever other equipment that goes along with that sport, you are now talking for a child not only the $200 to play, but the equipment and the necessities that he needs to play that sport multiplied by his brother and sister as well. For a lot of children, athletics is what keeps them involved in school. That might not be the way it's designed, but it is a fact of life. It keeps kids off the street, it keeps them out of trouble, and it keeps them in the classroom. It's those children, man, that I'm worried about. Just because that child might not be on a free lunch program, their parents might not be willing to pay an additional $200 for them to play sports. And that's a shame, because I think a lot of kids are, more than you think, are not going to play and participate in sports in the fall of 2011 and the coming class of this year. And you also mentioned that towns are going, other towns are doing this, but there's probably more towns that are not going to pay for play. What other, you know, have you looked into any other resolutions to do something other than this to, you know, offset the budget that I guess you're missing running on? And that's my question.
I think as Mr. Kuzinski pointed out earlier, Mr. Spazada pointed out earlier, now we have constraints on the budget, the total budget, and the board thought long and hard about this, and it wasn't with a lot of enthusiasm that we are endorsing this. But we did have to balance the academic requirements with the athletic requirements, and that we would have been curtailing certain programs on the athletic side. I mean, we are, when we formulated the budget, we did touch all areas, reduction of teaching staff in all areas, and this is a way to preserve the athletic programs that we have within that budget.
And we haven't stopped yet, okay? It doesn't mean that, certainly, we've been moving forward with this because it is part of our operating budget for the new year, but there's been some suggestion from different groups that maybe we could save out some transportation cost, and we're continuing to look at how we can save somewhere, but this is a way that we need to move forward. For now, hopefully, we can continue to back, we can continue to try to trim it back, but you're right. Speaking for myself, sports was something that kept me in school probably more than math. There's no doubt about that. And I feel for everyone that is concerned with this, or just that our backs are pretty much against the wall right now with the direction coming out of Trenton, and, but it doesn't mean we've given up on trying to bring this down to as low as we can for doing the way it affects me, but I don't, this year, we can't do that.
I understand, I appreciate your comments. I just like this.
Thank you for your...
We appreciate yours.
I'm going to make a note, I live on Monroe Street. My son is also a great participant in Nutley High School's sports. I just have a question, basically, are any other selectivities being charged to play or participate besides athletes and sports?
It's the band, the athletes, the cheerleaders, all those things.
How about like clubs?
Clubs are not, we are not doing anything with clubs at this point.
Okay.
If you look at the cost of clubs versus the cost of athletics, it's a proportion of weight, it's very different. You know, it's like 10 to 1 on sports.
But if you put them all together and everybody pays the cost, because I'm sure people who are into clubs might go to a football game on Saturday, or a soccer match, or to, you know, they're all, everybody's a participant in the sports because you got the fans, which are students. You know, I mean, if you put everything together, in the, you know, sports, you know, clubs, I'm aware of the band, and the cheerleaders are also in that.
Of course, the clubs, they got 1/10, but the rest of them, so...
I understand, but they, I understand, but they can still participate. They participate, they go yell at breaks out like I do, you know, and they pay, and then we pay for football. Do we pay for any other sports? Any spectator sports?
Basketball, basketball, wrestling.
No baseball?
No.
No basketball?
Basketball and wrestling and...
And the other sports are free to charge, right? Is there a way to charge? Are you allowed to do that? Maybe that might be a way to bring some money?
Something that certainly can be considered for the future, but at this point, not. The budget has been passed, we...
We did discuss that with the athletic director on charging for different things. It's just the way they're set up, who, for example, you know, there's people standing alongside the Zeg River, I mean, you know.
I understand.
There's just certain points that you can't charge for, okay? That's why the confined sports inside, such as basketball and wrestling and football, you know, different story, but...
Okay, so I have one other. I coached in the play, play midget football league for eight years. And the way that worked was everybody paid $35, children went in, coached them, every child played. This child paid $35, he paid. This one paid, he played. Now, in high school, it's a whole different criteria. You're going to have people, there are some kids and children who might not get in a football game the whole year, they play. Now, as a coach, that's what I had to deal with. We had a lot to play, because, and we wanted that, we wanted them to learn the game. That, you know, and we put them all in, everybody paid, they all played. How is this going to affect coaching? Mr. Pyro, he's going to have calls that are going to be, you know, my son paid for the $200, how come he's not? Is that in consideration?
Yes, we did spend a lot of time with the athletic director, and we also had the same concerns. We are going, when I mentioned that we're going to be meeting with the booster clubs, I also should have mentioned that we are going to have to sit down, come to meeting with the coaches, letting them know that we're not looking, we're not looking for the coaches to just bring children on so we can make money. And that's not the intent of it at all.
No, I understand.
It's obviously to keep them off the streets, to keep them busy, keep their mind functioning, and get them involved in the Nutley community. So it is a concern. I've spoken to a couple parents that their son is a better goalie or a better forward than the senior, but the senior might not get to play too much, and that it is going to be a concern, there's no doubt about it. We need to make sure the coaches are aware of this, and we might find ourselves having to deal with individual cases, because it is going to be a concern, there's no doubt about it.
It can be chaos.
I hope it's not going to be chaos, but it's going to be a concern.
Everybody, you know, one other thing, thank you. As far as costing the $200 to $300, my son this year, I'll spend $500 on it before I pay that $200, okay? Between camps, between mouthpieces, booster gloves, paying to go to every game, girdles, arm pads, whip pads, you know, I mean, it's all, that's all part of the deal, I'm not, you know, I can afford it.
I'm all right, but some people...
Mr. Kuzinski had addressed that, Mr. Kuzinski...
Yeah, no, we talked to, you know, fortunately for us, we have a board member who's also a hockey parent, I've talked to the soccer parents, I mean, I know the hockey people are paying $2,000 sometimes, but before they're even getting out there, you know, a stick costs 150 bucks, they've got to pick that up. I know there's quite a bit involved, and I know that, having had two girls that were very active in sports, I didn't pay at that time, okay, but I know what it cost me then, and like it or not, I was paid for playing back then simply because of the equipment that you need to buy when they're playing soccer and softball, and I know it's, it's not going to be easy, but there's no doubt about it.
Thank you very much.
One more question, one second.
One sec, because you should let somebody else come back.
The budget was approved, knowing that there is a swing for this shortage. Is that true?
We approved the budget, part of the record, part of that package of actions was the pay for participation.
And there's no, like, people have to pay, don't, I'm not saying it's some casual rhetoric, you don't have any, like, there's no vote on it, right? If you want to play, you have to pay, because, yes, that, okay, thank you very much.
Just a quick, I have a question. Is there a chance that we can get in touch with some of the districts who haven't, and maybe we can sit as board members and ask them the questions?
Well, I think that Mr. Kuzinski has already addressed that same, they are getting the letters, if they are...
Is any possibility we can get someone in, an athletic director from, who doesn't, Milburn doesn't?
Ask Sprowell, Warren.
I'm saying, maybe we get somebody in to give us some, uh, experience and questions they may get, and maybe we can be able to help out.
Thanks.
Hi, my name is Jerry Kuzinski, I live at 39 pencil, and I wanted to ask some questions about marching band and the way to play. It was my understanding that marching band is a class that meets regularly, and it's also part of an honors program, where they participate in marching band, they receive honors credits, and all the other ensembles. Is that correct?
Yes. Yes. I spoke to Mr. Kandieri today, he brought those concerns to me.
Okay, because then my other question would be, are there any other classes that are paid to play?
Well, I think marching band is a wonderful program, but it's also very unique in that the students are ordered one or two instrumental classes during the day, and then they participate in marching band, but I would have to determine, working with Mr. Kandieri, does every student who is in marching band participate in those classes, and the other way, is everyone in those classes participating in marching band? I'm not sure that's the case.
Okay, and also, the marching band pays $190 to go to the marching band camp, so the parents will now be paying, what, $390, is that, for them to participate in the marching band?
Yes.
Okay. If they have to pay the $200, will the marching band now be able to practice on a full football field? And also, without lights?
Lights, they have, they have, top of the conversation since I've been on the board, and it's a very expensive proposition, and in our tight budget, I don't see that happening.
I know that these kids, their performance depends on the line markers, and they've been practicing for years with no lights, one night a week. So we're going to have parents paying $200, and the kids still won't have lights. And the reason that they go to band camp is because they have a full field. So the boosters pay some of the money, the parents pay the rest, but $190 is paid so those kids can practice. They practice, they get up at 7:00 in the morning, and they end practicing at 10:00 with lights, but also a full field with markers that they can see, and they don't have to share the field with anybody else. So I'm really thinking that this should be reconsidered about marching band, because I don't think there's any football team that would play in the dark or practice in the dark, that would go down at the park and play on a section of, I don't know what, but that's where our kids are, they're down where all the ducks are running in between where they're going, and there's a mess out there. But our kids are taking all their equipment and taking it down there. Or would the board consider finding a field for them and busing them to a full field? I mean, back in my day, when I marched for Nutley, believe it or not, the band was on the field, and the football team went up to De Miro Park to practice. So, I mean, I don't know if that would be something to be considered, because, I mean, you're talking $390.
When I played ball, that's where we did our practice, up at De Miro Park, and the van had the old. But I don't, I think lights are pretty much out of the question right now, but certainly we would be able to look into allowing you the use of a facility that gives you a full field. I will talk to Joe, the athletic director, about it.
Because it seems like they always have to share the field, they never get that full field of the band when it's in the dark.
Okay.
I will look into it and get back to me, Mr. Croft, for an answer.
Thank you.
I have something else, but it's not...
You can come in, yes.
Hi, I'm Ruth Dierly, 30 Chase Street. I made it today.
I should have talked earlier.
Regarding the pay to participate, you said that the participants can play as they would like to, any sport they would like to participate in.
What I said was that we did not eliminate any activities that were there last year. The $200 entitles your son or daughter to play in as long as, obviously fits into their schedule and so on and so on, as many activities as that they would like to play for...
To no tryouts?
No, 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 not sure, not...
Because that's what it sounds like.
I'm sorry. If that was misconstrued, that's not what I'm saying, okay? I'm not saying, Charlie Kuzinski as a board member is not saying you can just go out to the team and you're going to be on it. I'm not saying that. Okay? I'm not saying that. I have not told the same things that are, that's what you heard, but that's not what I said. What I said was, they can apply and pay for, or apply and play for a sport that they are accepted into, the cost is $200 per year.
Okay.
To attempt or to try out, to participate in as many sports as you can.
Okay, and you're also, your other words were fair and equitable to all athletes. How is it fair to a student who plays one sport, to pay $200, and another student who plays three or four sports, still pays the same amount of money? That's not fair. That's not...
Again, again, that's not my choice, and I wouldn't, I wouldn't, you know, how to, if we're going to start splitting it up that way, it would be extremely difficult to do that. When I said fair and equitable, I meant that every sport will be paying, rather than paying a flat fee, rather than ice hockey or crew paying an official amount of money because of their expense, or football, as compared to a volleyball team, for example. That's what I meant by fair and equitable. Everybody's paying... Everybody's paying across the board for the same price. I can't control whether...
To me, and I'm sure of many other parents sitting here, that's not fair. My son plays lacrosse. His friends play football, they play lacrosse, they do track. How, I don't understand how that's fair. I mean, if I walk into the grocery store and I put $200 down, I don't get all the groceries I want. I pay for what I get. The same thing is if I put $200 down and only eat a gallon of milk, it's not fair. It's how I see it, I'm sure it's how everybody sees it. So I think it should be really rethought about the flat fee. I'm also a hockey parent, as one of your board members. All our kids have different ice times. We don't all pay the same amount. I pay a little less because my son's smaller. Someone who's older that has more ice time pays more money. That, I really feel that needs to be rethought by the board and the committee because it's not fair.
Thank you for your comments.
So that's why it doesn't go back.
I thought it seemed like a curse.
It won't go back.
My name is Nancy Simony C. 314 Harrison Street. Um, I'd like questions and comments about losing the music position of Mr. Beckerella. First of all, I'm not only a parent, you may have seen me before, but I'm a music teacher. I'm the high school string orchestra director. And one thing I do appreciate is I appreciate the elementary teacher and the middle school teacher and their dedication because I was also an elementary string teacher. So I know it's a lot of physical, hard work and dedication of a music teacher. And I also, as a high school teacher, appreciate the hard work and talent and dedication of the teachers that feed the program. Because all the trophies you see here on the wall in this school and in the other room and in high school are because of the foundation of the program and the continuation of the education of these students. Now, cutting a music teacher position in this school when it's experiencing such success is unconscionable. Really cutting a program off at the knees and might say, oh, we don't need fourth grade strings. Well, give it four or five years and you're going to start losing more teachers and more physicians and more programs because it's a triple up theory. Now, another thing, point I would like to bring out about music students is that so many times in a life, music touches the heart and soul of a kid who might not be successful in an academic class. So many times, teachers have come up to me after a concert and would say, I can't believe that that's the same kid in the academic class. I can't believe that that's a kid that's having trouble in math. We're going to the reading resource room. Or autistic kids. I can tell you about a few, and I won't go into detail or name names, of autistic kids who have arrived in the music program here in Nutley. And not only that, you know, it just gives them in existence a reason for staying in school. And I can, I can doubt to that because of my own daughter who was having a hard time staying in school, but is because of the music program. So before you say goodbye to another music teacher, who by the way, will put in immense amount of stress and tension on the music program and the music teachers for them to scramble to meet the needs of so many kids that really wanna be in the program, I would really think twice, please think twice. Please think about the kids whose passion it is to play music instruments and the kids whose lives you're saving. Thank you.
Jessica, I'm 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 Nancy Pyro. Um, I know something tonight that brings a lot of joy around, but I just have a question about it. Um, I see that Mr. Burns is here listed as rehired for the next four years. But at Rappus, we have a question whether he will be rehired as an art teacher, as becoming an art teacher in our school.
Mr. President, yes. At this time, Mr. Burns has been rehired for next year as a classroom teacher at this time.
What are the plans to the art department?
I can't speak to that yet. We certainly have a lot of work to do between now and the end of the season, being with the principals and all concerns.
So he would not be asked or tapped at all to then teach our children? He'd be in our building as a full-time teacher, but then his talents as an art teacher would not then be used?
Right now, and it's very difficult to speak about personnel issues, but what I can say is we've made a very conscious effort to make sure that Mr. Burns is still in this school district at this moment.
We are thrilled.
And that is a much better position than eliminating him from our staff completely. That gives us some opportunities to really take a good, hard look. I can't commit or promise to anything. All I can tell you is we are very mindful of the talents of many individuals who happen to be in this room this evening and the contributions they make to our students. We're incredibly mindful of that. And we are working very hard as a board and as an administrative team to maximize our options for those people and certainly if we're maximizing our options for those people, the students that are in here. So we are very mindful of this and it's an ongoing discussion.
It would just be a shame to waste his talents and what he's brought to Rappus and not be able to use it.
I'm not gonna disagree with you.
Thank you very much.
I'm working very hard.
Thank you.
Sorry, the mic out. No, no, take the mic out if you want.
I'm not gonna say too much. Uh, Alec Rubens, 354 Hillside Ave. Uh, we wanted to reiterate the accolades of the music department and demonstrate a product, current part of the music department. Mr. Kandieri said in one of his concerts, you know, that music is equally as important against academics and athletics. And this is an example of what we will cut if we lose Mr. V.
Good evening, my name is Richard Ellison, 43 Cedar Street in Nutley. Uh, I understand all of your positions, you're in a very difficult position in a tight budget here and I thank you for hanging in there with us and considering these thoughts. I've hired people and I know it's very difficult to hire people and when you get a good hire, you're very happy. A lot of times you hire people and it's not necessarily the best person. You have to live with it. And we found the great one in Mr. Beck Relo. One of the important things for me is, is music develops the mind and the younger the better. This year's valedictorian is one of the leaders of the music program. And as many years as I can remember, the valedictorians have been in the music program. So it really helps develop the mind. And so if you have to do other things like delay instruments purchases or something else, please do that. Thank you very much.
First, the number 65 Records Place. I'm here to echo the sentiments that you've heard regarding our music program. I need to try to be succinct, I'm gonna read, um, I'm also gonna add some comments regarding the world languages program, which hasn't come up yet, CD. When I heard about possible staff that's stored top notch music department, I put together petitionments in my hand and I started bringing it with me wherever I went, like softball games, baseball games, first full day at the drop off at Yantakaw, at a lecture at Spring Garden, voice count meetings, basically my travels, me and this petition. Regardless of the venue or group, absolutely everyone I approached agreed that they do not want our music program to be diminished in any way. So while the signatures I have here include a tiny fraction of parents, students and taxpayers, I feel absolutely confident and asserting that this petition represents the importance of this community on the importance of music in our curriculum. Since I began circulating this petition for music, I heard that we are also eliminating the elementary world languages program, even though it's mandated by the New Jersey Core Curriculum Content Standards. No doubt, you're already aware of the research-based evidence of the importance of music and language education for our children's development and overall academic performance. And that exposure to both areas at an early age increases participation and leads to higher levels of proficiency during the middle of high school years. I understand that these are difficult economic times and you're operating under Governor's 2% cap. But on behalf of the community, my questions to you are, why these cuts and what is your plan going forward?
Mr. Zarr, maybe you can kind of, um, world language?
Regarding the world language, this was the recommendation of our coordinator of world languages and the input from our principals. And we feel, at least at this point, we can infuse languages in the classroom through a variety of means. They were very, very emphatic that this was something that they felt was a, an acceptable alternative.
By what means?
We have Rosetta Stone and we have a license for that to be in every classroom. We make great strides with technology, we have computer labs and many of our younger teachers are, I should say, lower level teachers speak a variety of languages, have come through high school and college with a mastery of language, even though they're elementary teachers. And we feel that we can revisit this as we look and we really, again, why the cuts? Again, $32 million, a dramatic amount of money. And we're really compelled to take some very, very, very persuasive steps in every area. I mean, everybody advocates, the athletes are advocating for their programs and of course those parents, the music program, the arts, library, media centers, the technology people. We cut a content area in high school. We looked at the middle school numbers and transferred middle school teachers to the high school to cover those losses. Uh, I've been doing this verse, I think this was my seventh budget. I've never seen anything more difficult or more trying than all of us. And we're very hopeful that as we move through this year and to next year, that we will be in this position and we can really put some things together that we feel comfortable with for the long term. Uh, we have added, and added, and added, and that's the right thing to do, gifted and talented program, expanded the music program, expanded technology, expanded course orders, expanded athletic programs, expanded clubs and activities. While every other district was cutting, we were adding because it was the right thing to do for our students. And if we have 4% cap, we wouldn't be sitting here, this meeting would be long over. And unfortunately, we didn't have a 4%, but we had a 2% cap, which told us as a district to be financially responsible. We have to cut programs. And it's the teachers in the classroom that are highest priority, we build off of that. And I told you I was comfortable or happy or any positives, those emotions don't exist right now. Instead, I'm saddened that we're faced with this. We have worked very hard as an administrative team and support education, the old board transitioning into the new board, the new superintendent and I working together. We're really, I've never seen it where we are looking at the smallest amounts of money and try to cobble all of those amounts of money together to maybe make one teaching position. I've never seen anything like it. And I hope it gets better rather than worse, I really am.
Just a follow-up question regarding the implementation of Rosetta Stone and the use of skills with master teachers to supplement what we've lost. Of course, our program is quite limited already.
Absolutely.
One day per week and then some grades. I mean, with the onset of full day kindergarten, we have to reduce our packages this year. Something's better known, and my fear is that we eliminated and it doesn't ever come back with any robustness.
Well, I'm hoping that's not the case and I'm sure the ladies and gentlemen sitting around that table will make sure that that doesn't happen as we move through this coming budget year and move forward. I'm hoping that, you know, dramatic changes in having a lack of education in this state. And perhaps, I know on the town side, there's been a lot of discussion that Nutley does not get its fair share of stadium as a community. And I'm hoping that we can piggyback on that and perhaps we're entitled to move. I certainly pay a little lot to train them and I think that perhaps we're entitled to move. But I'm a child actor, my job here is to make sure that children get what they need within reason. I would love to give everybody everything and hopefully we get this year.
Thank you.
My name is Priscilla, I'm at 411 Madison Street. Um, I'd like to address the issue of Rappus extraordinary, I was a art teacher also. While I'm very happy to hear that he is being rehired, I would just like to present my experience. I've had children in Rappus school for 10 years. And in the early years, we petitioned a day, the principal, Mrs. Francioso, please, please, please get us a new art teacher. And at the time, she basically told us her hands were tied, there wasn't much she could do because we had a 10-year teacher, we were getting close to three figures. The projects the children brought home were basically piece of paper on paper, coloring pages in a corner, and what they were, it was really pathetic. Eventually we were blessed and got Mr. Burns. Um, and as I said, he was extraordinary. About a week or so ago, he put on an art show at the school. Mr. Rogers could speak to it, he was there in attendance. Each child had, I think, at least two projects displayed and it was phenomenal. You would not believe what we saw from kindergartners, from special learners, you would not believe it. He is teaching these children, um, different art forms, art styles, art history. My children, who do not have an artistic bone in their body due to genetics, not believe what my son did. He came home, well, it's still hanging up though, with, um, I know my art history, I'm very nervous, I'm sorry. God, put his ear off, come on. We recreated Starry Night. I believe it. And my other son, who's now in high school, he hated art and Mr. Burns was his first year. He came home and he started talking about Mr. Burns. So, well, I again appreciate that he's being rehired. I think it would be a travesty not to place him where he belongs, a travesty to the school district, and by more importantly, a travesty to the children. Because art, as with music, um, it's, you know, while everyone, you know, you know, they have to teach math, they have to teach language arts, of course you do, but art can help in so many other areas. It works with the right side of the coin, it teaches, it enhances creativity, abstract, think, reasoning, critical thinking. So it helps kids with their math skills and their science skills. So it really is not something that can be ignored. So I really hope you can consider that in your decisions.
Thank you.
And one other question I have is, I can't understand that Rappus school is going to be using their library, is that correct?
Mr. Zarr?
Yes.
Is that correct?
This is a barrel is going into the classroom and what we will be doing is we will be taking, the elementary principals will be developing a schedule for four, four library media center individuals to cover the five schools. And that schedule will be fair and equitable among the five schools.
So that's how they're gonna get their technology?
Yes. The library will be covered, certified library. We will be, we will be really reassigned everybody, the schedule will be developed before September where those libraries will be covered.
Thank you.
Jerry Kuzinski, 39 Pennsylvania. I'm also the president of the music boosters. And I have to tell you, since we have heard about Mr. V using his job, I have been bombarded with phone... about Mr. B using his job, I have been bombarded with phone calls and emails from people that I don't even know, I don't even know how they got my email, my work email, to talk about, you know, the strain that's going to be put on the rest of our music teachers. I know I'm repeating myself and everybody else, but we're, we've been for four years in a row the top one hundred communities for music, and the fact that we're going to let somebody go is part of all that, but also begins back to the lower grade where we see that the party will lose the strength's teacher for fourth graders. And, you know, that's the place to start in the fourth grade, because we still have the opportunity to tell our kids here. When you go to fifth grade, they've already started doing other things. But I really wanted to talk about Mr. B, because being a part of the Music Booster, my son doesn't go to Nutley High School, but he's been a marching band member for five years, and he's been involved in all the ensembles for the last four years, and made every one of those commitments. So he and myself have been very committed to the town of Nutley's music program. But Mr. B, the years that I've been working with him, he has volunteered so much of his own time before he became a teacher here, while he's a teacher here. Music Boosters tries to help out as much as we can. He goes to band camp, and along with all those people that are being paid, spends just as many hours doing the same, not more, working with each kid individually to get them to where they need to be. And it's just really important that you know that we possibly could lose this person who volunteers so much of his time, and even his money, because when we wanted to reach out to kind of help him out, he said, "I know the kind of love with the boosters, don't worry about it, we're just gonna do that." But more importantly, I think you all know that Nutley's going off to Italy in about two weeks' time to perform original scores for our kids, and even though he's losing his job, he's actually going, because we actually need him. Mr. Maile needs him, the staff, the kids need him, and he's still going, because we need him to help those kids learn these scores. So if there's any possibility, again, to reconsider, I think we really need to reconsider Mr. B, because the rapport that he's built with the students, with the staff, and with the musical, he volunteers so much of his own time that I don't think anybody really realizes how much time he does. So I just wanted to get that over again to say, we should really reconsider somebody who, he volunteers his own time.
Thank you.
Amanda Reid, here with the thirty-third street, my son Eric. Music student. We didn't have the pleasure of having Mr. Riccarella down at Nutley School for a little while, but we did have the pleasure of being with him this year, and the impact he has been having these kids, he worked with the percussion line. Those boys and girls won awards at every competition for the percussion. If not for that man and the staff, they wouldn't have done it. They're good, they would have done it, but he is amazing for the children. I had the pleasure of standing today to re-part with him for the middle school band competition, which was phenomenal, and the respect the kids had for him was amazing. The respect he had for the kids was even more amazing. So we're standing before you alone with my husband, who supports him, and the music program, as are many parents, freshman, sophomore, junior, even have students, their kids are graduating and not coming back to Nutley School. They're here to support the music program also. So please, 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 keep Mr. Riccarella.
As Mrs. Fizinski has said, and other parents, Mr. Riccarella, he stays after, I've noticed with the marching band, the Italy ensemble, the work ensemble, he'll stay after and help our percussion, percussion section do, do better. He helps them a lot, I've noticed, it's, it's made, it really helps.
Hi, I'm Lashai Chasten, sixty-six Fisher Avenue. I'm not gonna give you a hard time, all right? I get, I get the whole pay-to-play thing. My biggest concern is the children who may not be able to play, who have been playing, and I'm the soccer mom, okay, that's my life. So there's soccer boys and girls out there who have been playing since they were five years old, and maybe their families can't afford this, okay? And it breaks, breaks my heart to see these children not be able to play. And I can tell you, it's a big concern, and maybe for some of the people in this room, I don't know. But I think, and I know that you've looked at the approach, you know, how you can maybe try to get around that, you know, the whole lunch program. You may have children who are not in the lunch program, but still can't afford it. So, all right, maybe that's one criteria, but, you know, you need to try to figure something out, because I really, really hate to see these kids not being able to play. And not just soccer, even football, you know, all of them, the bands, everything, I just really hate to see that. And the other thing is the booster clubs. Now, you realize that we are, will be non-existent after us.
I hope that's not true.
I do too, Charlie, I do, but I don't see it happening.
The booster clubs, as we all know, as board members, they go above and beyond. They, we were at the Crew Booster Dinner the other night, and I think they gave them awards, they, smaller awards, they were seventy dollars apiece, and they handed out five or six of them. Certainly, we as taxpayers don't pay for that, so I know the booster clubs pick quite a bit of it up. I was hoping the booster clubs would be just as active, if not more.
Well, we would love to be, you know, and my husband and I, I mean, we would love to do whatever we could.
I know.
You know, we spend every year, at the end of the year for the seasons, and I'm happy to do this, I love doing this. You know, over a hundred dollars, including the dinner, and we put a shirt and a frame with the name on it. I mean, it's a, it's a great way for them, you know, to leave at the end of the season, and I love it, but that money's not going to be there for a long time. You know, they're not gonna, they're not gonna pay you two hundred dollars or three hundred dollars, whatever the case may be, and then give me twenty dollars towards, or ask, that's not my pay, my mortgage, or give us twenty dollars towards the booster club. Now, we should agree. Or, you know, we have, we do fundraising for clothing, they're not, they're not going to want to do that. They're not, they may not be able to do that. And I do, I get it, I really do, but we need to, like, maybe do something, I don't, I don't know, Charlie.
Next, thank you. Thank you.
All right.
Kat, here with that one thirty-six Columbia Avenue. I was thinking a lot of my son was saying to me, we go to Rattcliff, and last year we lost our school nurse, and then we heard that this year we're gonna lose our art teacher and possibly our librarian, which we are, and even though Mr. Barans is gonna be in a classroom, he's not really following his passion. And my son keeps asking me, why our school, why just our school? But it also made me think of our nurse. We went six months this past school year without a nurse, or part-time, and my son has asthma, and luckily he can self-administer, but the secretary has it all to find that out. So no matter how many down you are, you're down one nurse, if you're down one teacher, one art teacher, one music teacher, whatever, it's still one down, and it's gonna affect everyone else.
We, in fact, we had a certified substitute nurse in every day. We actually had two nurses and they were splitting time.
There was a gap, that's all I'm saying, there was a gap.
It was, I think, in the twenty-one Beach Street, speaking on behalf of Rattcliff and Mr. Barans, and even a little bit for Mr. B, he did serve for a year there. Not only are we losing him, but also losing a male figure in our school that has such a positive impact on our male students, also elementary schools, women, and Mr. Barans has made art pool, and I'm sure Mr. B's made an initial group for these kids. And it just feels like, I just wanna make a comment about them, but it just feels like Rattcliff always gets the raw, raw end of the deal. Now, do we have to worry next year about our music teacher? I mean, I'm sure she's concerned and possibly looking for a job, I mean, a wonderful music teacher, but it just seems like we lost our nurse, we lost our art teacher, our librarian. I mean, am I to be concerned that my child is going to, my children at three in the school are gonna have to deal with this every year, losing somebody? Is it just because we have the lowest population at our school that it's always gonna be our school?
Well, it's a variety of factors, it's need throughout the district, it's seniority, it's tenure versus non-tenure, it's population.
But are we looking at first Rattcliff students, or do they share with the teacher?
I wanted to get away from this misconception that Rattcliff will not have an art teacher and it will not have a librarian.
Share, I should use the phrase.
I think because these aren't in fact Rattcliff staff, that everybody feels that Rattcliff is going to be uncovered, we're going to, and I know it's gonna take a while for people to reorder their thinking, but we're gonna have four people, and they're not going to have a home base. They're going to be circulating equally among five schools. And this suggestion came from the elementary principals, and very frankly, they made that suggestion not knowing who would be moved or not moved, and...
So it's just because our teachers have, you know, the tenure?
It's a variety of factors, and I couldn't speak to each one specifically, but there are a variety of factors could be, could weigh a situation.
Just a comment, does it have a question?
Oh, no doubt, no doubt.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I just wanna piggyback upon some of the Rattcliff parents, it's not that we feel that it's always Rattcliff, but the children have had three gym teachers in one year this year. They're talking about the nurse. I could stand up here and talk about Mr. Barans accolades till the sun comes up again. I just want you to keep in mind that Rattcliff is a strong community, we're always voting for the budget. That concerns me next year when I'm arguing with my older neighbors, I don't have children in the school district anymore, and I'm begging them to vote yes for the budget and not take it out on school budget when they're thinking about their finances. You know, and that's another, another area too, where you try to convince parents to vote for the budget. You know, we keep losing teachers, it's like a revolving door, and people take it out on school budget, when they get upset, that's the first place they go and say, we're voting no. So I'm just very concerned, all of these cuts are being made this year, and parents become disheartened now of all these decisions, and I know it's not Rattcliff specifically, I don't even look at the whole, the whole board, and where, you know, the music and arts usually first to go, but I'm just very concerned about the budget, and I'm really worried about their share about cuts coming, if, you know, they're happening this year. And I want you to keep in mind that we've experienced many cuts, and many, I should say, changes at Rattcliff, and we do pride ourselves on the special learners program, and children, elementary children can't handle change that well, like, the kids come home, they're upset, they haven't a phys ed teacher, they haven't, they don't have a nurse, but when you start affecting the special learner program with different, like, art teachers and music, the specialty people, you're diminishing the whole goal of that program to mainstream those kids into a, you know, regular classroom situation. So please, keep that in mind when you have to, you know, decide whether or not an art teacher should be, you know, pulled completely from, from his specialty, okay? Change if that impacts on children. Thank you.
I just have one quick question, to pay-to-play, are we looking at quick responses to subsidized portions of it?
The truth is, we spent some time talking about corporate sponsorship, but not so much for pay-to-play, like, for example, we need a new scoreboard, and you know, so we're looking at the possibility of maybe going into having some type of corporate sponsor there, and certainly it's not a bad idea that we go beyond. It's something new to schools throughout the district, throughout the state, but we certainly can look into that.
I just wanted to make a couple comments here. It seems to me that this pay-to-play situation is not necessarily, it may be an option, but I don't think it's potentially the best option. I have three children, and one of which plays everything, and would it be something that would be good for me to say, okay, pay for each score, it probably would be the full price, whatever it is. I have another child who's very, very much not so active, but because of the music programs and all things that she's in the music program, she has excelled beyond my wildest dreams. She's doing very well. Part of these, my youngest son, who is academically outstanding, my only reason, because he's my last child, for staying within the Nutley school system, in a public school, because it is public school, he is very, very well-centered here. But he can go to any school many months, he's a straight student, he tests like you wouldn't believe. So when it comes down to you making considerations, saying, you know what, is it Nutley or is it other opportunities? I think, well, the music program will appease me here, because he's not gonna get that elsewhere. So, in this consideration, that you all guys have had on the table here, and I understand your position, I do, I know it's a negotiation, I know it's a budget, I have to get, I get it, get that. I work for the largest insurance in New Jersey, I get contracts, IT contracts, millions of dollars I wrote for every day. The point is, I think there needs to be options, and there needs to also be inclusion. We are the parents, these are our kids, I think we should have some way of saying, okay, here are the potential things we've been looking at, what do you think? Twenty-five minds, or forty-five minds, or whatever, if in some way we can sit down and say, you know what, objectively, you wanna come to a decision, you wanna say how it's gonna be, I understand you all would like to, you all had your, you've said whatever, and I respect that completely, but when you're talking about moving from a public school that's doing a pay-to-play and potentially impactful, many of us have kids in college, you know, and are barely making ends meet, because there's no raises, everything's going up, food, gas, everything's going up, and now two hundred more dollars to have them participate. It's hardship. Then, the icing on the cake is, I pay this money, my kid's allowed, allowed to participate, but he doesn't play, because we know politics within the sports world in Nutley is factored as well, you know? Not to put anything against any person, I understand everybody can't play, but the bottom line is, when you're paying for it, you got a different perspective. So I really think that there needs to be some discussion, you need to have some parent panels, some focus groups, something, because it's not gonna be well-handled. And what's the end result? You know what, this is not working for me, do I wanna stay here, do I wanna move? It's not, it shouldn't be an option, but that's a consideration. You know, I have the potential to do that, you know, I don't want to do that. I wanna stay here, we love this community, we've been really, really well-accepted, our kids are thriving here, but things are changing. Does that impact my children negatively? If that does, I've got my group considerations. Thank you.
I'd just like to take a very good to say about booster clubs and what that young lady just said. This is tough economic times, I've been involved in only football boosters for five years. Last year, we did one of the biggest projects I was most proud of, it was the boys' RC locker room. I spent five weekends there among the other people in the booster club. We raised a lot of money to do that. And it wasn't just for football, it was for anybody who uses that RC locker room. And as you can hear, everybody's displeased and concerned about economic times and coming up with money, and the booster clubs are gonna get hit hard, at least, from what I'm hearing, people's concerns about coming up with extra money. And this is gonna prevent us from doing projects and helping out, and it's not gonna be lack of effort, I can promise you that. My son will be a senior next year, when he graduates, I will scoot down to the booster club trying to help out. I was very proud of the project that we did with that locker room, it came out beautiful, and I just hope that this doesn't deter those type of things. So again, I know it was tough times for you guys as well, but any alternative plan that you can come up with, or try to do away with this or reduce it in the following year, would be really appreciated, because the kids of Nutley, it's a good town, and I really hate seeing these kids lose that. Thank you.
That closes this portion of the meeting. Any own business?
Is this the question that I can speak to, or anything that I wanted to, just to say?
Yes.
First, I, you know, I wanna make a statement that no board members in love with this. Secondly, is I'd like to state that, you know, in sports, guys, I'd like to stay a couple minutes, and that's why we need to do this as we go, because I see you leaving. But in other districts, you know, I come from a different position before I came to the board, other districts have cut freshman sports, they've cut programs, they've cut music, not just in one teacher, but from the entire district. There are districts across the state that have no music, no freshman sports, many other programs. This board took some hard decisions, and if you listen to this tonight, you know, what you're hearing tonight is a family sitting down to try to do a budget between the parents and the board, and everybody's sitting here, and most of us have been parents, are parents. You know, I was in the band, my son's very involved in athletics. I was in the band. My son's very involved in athletics. I chose to take friends of Nutley Sanders and Music Boosters, the athletic committee, because of the things that I really care about. So nobody's trying to cut any one specific program here. Pay to play was just a way to say, and, you know, before I got here, they discussed this before I got to the board, but do they just cut programs, the least, some of the sports, and then cut for some children so that pay to play didn't have to occur? And I have to agree that I don't think any sport in Nutley should be cut. You know, most people don't know that our crew program is the second oldest public crew team in the state of New Jersey. Should we be looking to do things like that? They're great programs. I heard a talk about the band that I remember used to practice in the oval. She's still here, I want to talk about. She, I believe. Talking about the town, the last fields, the last ovens will be turfed by September. We share other fields with the school district. It's not used at three o'clock in the afternoon till the men's sports and the recs sports at eight at night. Maybe we can talk about using that field for the band. That'll not be a transportation issue, but it'll be a lined field just like the oval would be. So I think there's other things. This is new to the board also. And I think we will all be working. We all know these issues. They go forward. When you talk about the $200, whether you're in band, there's band members that play sports and sports and do other programs. It covers all ranges. That's one of the things that the athletic committee talked about the other day, is not to have to worry if it was separate from a band, to a sport, to a program. And when you talk about camps, I use girls softball that goes to camps and the boys, not all of them, but the hockey players go to a camp. We all pay for the camps, whether it's sports or in band. So that really doesn't rationalize about the 200 to the other part, because the sports people are paying out of their pocket for the camps just as well. This really all goes together. Then you've heard tonight about the music teacher, the art teacher, the librarian, the world languages. Those are things that affect our other kids, or affect all of our kids, whether they're music or sports. Because those things are going to affect them for not doing that. And we have to cut further into that to not have pay to play, or further into that to do other programs, will be affecting majority of our students from college and other activities of not having that. You know, and Mr. Zare explained it well. And again, these are decisions, you know, that were involved prior to the budget. So there's only so much money right now. But every school, and we talked about the Radcliffe School and the Washington School art teacher. Well, the Washington School art teacher that's the art teacher isn't Washington schools anymore. She's Radcliffe's, she's Lincoln's, she's all of the schools. Nobody is one school anymore in that field. And the five principals recommended that before I came here, that they could do with four art teachers traversing five schools. So not one art teacher staying in one school. There'll be a rotation set up, and I don't know that's going to occur yet, but I'm willing to see how that's happening. You know, we're coming along. We talked about talented gifted and the top 100 music. Hundred percent. And when I was in the band, just before I got in the band, they, the first time they ever made an album was just before I got there. Two years before me, they played in Shea Stadium at a Jets game, and actually made an album, still talked about, talented gifted programs. I don't want to see any of those affected. The problem is, and it comes down to just what we're in today, today's society, is funds. And everybody stood up and talked about a different program. And that's just like when we talk about how we're buying electric from Pennsylvania because we don't want to build a plant in Jersey. It's not in my backyard, but it's, don't do it to my sport, don't do it to my teacher. I think this board has sat together, and I'm only here a short time with them, and really tried to say, how can we save every program? How every program? Because no student is losing any program. They might get one hour less, I'm not saying of an art, or one hour less at the library, and you're paying for sports. But we're not cutting sports. We're not cutting programs. And I just wanted to make sure, you know, and believe me, the town of Nutley is my true love. And that next year, you know, things will be different. And we're looking at budgets and issues, state funding. You know, I love saying that Mr. Commissioner Evans and Mayor Cutchell went down about the fairness of the revenue between the Nutley. And the commissioner of DCA said directly to them, well, we looked at it. Before we'll help you out when we funds, we think you need to cut your police department because it's too large. Well, if they don't do that in Essex County, New Jersey, and you look at the crime rates around Nutley, and look at the crime rates in, that shouldn't be an answer that the town of Nutley is being given by the commissioner of DCA. So whether it's the commission to the board, everybody's really trying to protect everybody. And you have, I can tell you, everybody on the commitment is here, that this is not a permanent fix. Hopefully, it's a temporary fix. As funds come back. Mr. Kozinski was in charge as the chairman of the, not athletic, the other committee, personnel committee. And he calls me regularly with updates of trying to save this teacher. And we might be close. If we can find a couple of bucks, dollars more here, we can save one more teacher. And I go, great job, Charlie. I'm really excited about that. So I just had to give a large overview, because my son's in sports, I was a band person, you know, so I can go both worlds. But we need to protect the children. And I think this try to does it. So I apologize if I'm not so long, Mr. President, but...
Thank you. Any other old business?
Mr. President. I'm the school board rep at the Radcliffe School, so I'm going to advocate a little for the school that I represent this evening. There is this, well, it was at least until Mrs. Zare was able to answer the question, this perception that teachers or nurses are kind of rolling into that Radcliffe school. And after hearing from the parents of that school over the past several weeks, you know, I got this concern about the continuity of education and about the love and respect and the, I guess more so the trust that many of these teachers, such as the two that were spoken about this evening, have developed for young people. And that's all part of education. To get a young person to trust you is a difficult task. And when, whether it be an art teacher, music teacher, or any other type of teacher, is able to achieve that goal, you achieve something extraordinary. You know, I've learned that all of the teachers that we have talked about over the past several weeks, that have been involved in the discussion, if you will, are extraordinary people. And I know all of us as a school board, if we were able to take this magic wand and say, you're staying with us, and you're not going anywhere, and the waves aren't going to get rough, we would do that. But I'm an optimist. You see, I guess it's the way that, you know, I go back to my military training. They always say, there's a way. There is a way. You've got to find a way as a team. And this school board, now this is, I guess, the second or third one that I've been sitting on over the past three years, is also an extraordinary school board. And I'm believing, and I could be all wet on this, but I'm believing that somehow, some way, if there's a way, we will find a way to sustain what we have. It may take a little time. But I caught, and I hope everyone else caught the words of Mr. Zare. When the question was asked about a specific issue, he said, at this time, which means that the doors open. And I'm not talking about a false hope. Perhaps Mr. Scheller, I know Mr. Kozinski touched on this. This is not a bed in the water, concrete written stone. Because we all know, or at least hope, that there will be some money coming from Trent. And if that's the case, I know this board is committed to doing what's right. And what's right is not for us as a school board. What's right is for the children of this district. So I advocate for Radcliffe and disrespect that. There's been some extraordinary things going on in that school. With regard to, as I guess one of the ladies that came up talking about community, the strength that it's given this community. And that's not to the very extent I just believe in. Every school does a great job here. But I happen to be their rep of Radcliffe. And I have a responsibility and obligation to represent their interests when they bring it to me. So saying that, I would ask that, and I know it's kind of rhetorical, because I know we're already doing this, but the public needs to know this, that we're looking at every single thing we can possibly look at. And as some of you all were talking tonight, things were racing through my mind, like, can we go to the National Endowment of Arts? Can we go to, as a man said tonight, a corporate sponsor? Can we go to someone that may just, may just recognize one of the greatest music programs in the country and say, maybe I should be part of the solution, and maybe I could get involved? So that's all I'd like to say, Mr. President, and I thank you for giving me the time.
Any other old business?
I'm the rep for Yannacua School, and I just want to share with you a letter that Mr. Sorensen forwarded to me. It's in regard to Chartwell School Service. It says, he's commending one of their employees. One of their employees left to action was one of the second grade students was choking on a chicken tender. And as she saw the youngster was in distress, she immediately went over and gave him the high milk midicure, dislodging the obstruction, allowing him to breathe again. And the employee was sued her.
Thank you.
I received a request from an organization located in Morris Town, New Jersey called Lwoodwood Church, who was interested in renting the middle school, auditorium, several classrooms, and the cafeteria from 6:00 AM to 2:00 PM every Sunday, starting August 21st through June 24th. The revenue that can be generated from this rental is a total of $1,564 per week. Of that, about 604 go towards the custodial overtime. So we could net $960 per week. And I wanted to bring this to the board's attention, to see if it's something that you may be interested in entertaining, as they are looking for an answer to their request. And then we could go through getting the rest of the insurers and other related documents.
I'd just ask Mr. Rocco, if there are any legal issues that we...
I would appreciate an opportunity to take a look at it. The concern I have, as you mentioned, with church, so I get concerned about the religious connotation. And there's constitutional issues in terms of the school being used for religious purposes. Question is the time that it is, whether it's while we're in school, et cetera. There's equal protection arguments. So I would suggest that I review that request, do weigh in on the legal end of it before the board responds.
As we talk now, any revenue we're generating, things would be good. On the other hand, we want to make sure we are not. We want to stay in compliance with the laws and regulations. So we'll wait for this.
Other new business, I want to announce that, starting next, the next meeting, which is actually on a Tuesday, not a Monday, Tuesday, the 28th of June, we, it's been reviewed by council and the school boards association, that we're going to go back. This is sort of the way we had run the meetings, in that we will open at 6:30, and then we'll go immediately into closed executive session. We're going to talk about the, some personnel issues and the contracts for legal counsel and for the school physician. We're going to go into closed session, and we will come back out at 7:30 promptly to go into open session. This is in compliance with the ruling, the court ruling that had occurred that has brought to our attention.
We're going to do that with all of our...
Yes, starting with the next meeting.
The caveat to that, so you understand, and we'll refer to the covered case, the key is, so that the public is advised, that we stick to a schedule. What happened with the rectors of board and trustees is they would open in public, go into private, advertise they'd be back in an hour and a half or so, and then come back two hours later, three hours later, four hours later. So the objective was that the public never knew and never understood when the public meeting was going to take place. What I have done is I've instructed as the board president, based on a very recent seminar that I attended, that if we advertise for 6:30 and open and go right into private, and come back at the announced time and stick to that schedule, so you people will know, you don't have to be here at 6:30, because all we're going to do is open and go right into private. You'll be here for the 7:30 or 8 o'clock time it's advertised, in order to witness the full deliberations. It will enable this board also to be able to discuss prior to the meeting, the type of issues that they're allowed to discuss in private executive session, which include litigation, which include contract negotiations, which include personnel-related matters. Thank you.
I'm Mr. Rocco. I'm going to put a couple of parents on the spot. Ladies and gentlemen, in this audience tonight are Mr. and Mrs. White. You know what I'm going to say. You know, they're supposed to complain, but you're here. And when I see people that have achieved, or at least their children have achieved some great things, I'm going to do what I want to do. Mr. and Mrs. White has a child who was in chess golf, I believe, correct? And won a New Jersey State Chess Tournament out of this district. I mean, I'm sure... Mrs. Zare and I saw her sitting there. We were waiting for the opportune time to bring that to the public's attention. And Mr. Zare said, isn't that the young man we're going to bring before the board? He said, his parents are sitting right there.
Once the rectors, they didn't win, they came in second.
Okay, that's a win.
But Devon had the highest score overall.
That's a win.
Mr. President and Mr. Rocco, as far as, you know, the other part of the record issues, I think they were also looking for the help of the fact that we need to identify why we're going to close with greater specificity than, not just this, other forms, including records and not, like, just simply saying personnel, it's not always, if you're a little bit more specific.
I can tell you exactly. That's the other part of the opinion. You're absolutely right. What he talks about is, for example, you don't use the generic term litigation.
Right.
You identify what type of litigation. You don't use the generic term contract negotiations we talked about. However, if you read the opinion, they do say personnel, you can still be broad enough with personnel. But yes, I'm aware of that. I've also discussed that with the board president. Thank you.
Any other new business?
Would Mr. and Mrs. White, will you bring your setup next board meetings, recognize this achievement? You will contact them.
Whereas, the Board of Education will be discussing matters exempt from public discussion pursuant to NJSA intent, code four dash cloud. Now there, for it to be resolved, the Board of Education will assess, close the technical session at this time for discuss tri-tech slash ACM litigation, personnel, and NBA business initiatives. We have fabricated results of discussion. We made public by inclusion, the subject meeting for the Board of Education, which we discussed those matters in closed session. No longer exists. I so want, all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you all.